The meeting of the Planning Board Borough of Somerville for October 9th, 2024 will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meeting Act, has been provided, then on a copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was one posted on the bulletin board outside of Borough Hall, two mailed, faxed, or emailed to the Courier News, and three given to the Clerk Administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues the Board can may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call.
Andrew O'Dea. Chris Addicks. Bart Aiken. Excuse us this evening. Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Jason Kraska.
Here.
John Manilio, he'll be sworn in trily. Mayor Gallagher.
Here.
Councilperson Vroom.
Here.
Acting Chairperson Warner.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask that everybody please remain standing. I'd like a moment of silence for the passing of our previous chairman, Bernie Novato. Bernie served on this Board for 35 years. March 27th, 1989, he was appointed to the Somerville Board. In 98, he was appointed as Chairman of the County Board. There are way too many things that we could mention and accomplishments of Bernie. He is going to be dearly missed, and I know every one of us on this Board hope to live up to what he has set as a very high bar for Somerville. Thank you.
So moved. Second. Andrea Dare.
Was I here for them, Captain?
I'm sorry?
Was I here? Yes. I was here at the last meeting.
You were here.
No, no, yeah.
September, I was away, so I abstained.
You were away.
You're abstaining. Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilperson Vroom.
Yes.
Acting Chairperson Warner.
Yes. Oath of office.
John, you're gonna stand up over here. I'm gonna raise your right hand. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Giovanni Manilio.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I will.
True faith and allegiance to the same.
Faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
The governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of a planning board member.
All the duties of a regular planning board member.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. We have no pending resolutions. I am going to move around the agenda a bit. We're gonna take all of our pending business and go after our presentations. So the next up on our agenda is the presentations. We had put out an RFP for a planner for affordable housing to take care of that for the borough. These presentations are for of the applicants that we would like to hear from, from the Board. We will start with Colliers. Just a reminder, 10 minutes, and then we'll have five minutes of Q and A.
Thank you. Good evening. Is this on?
There you go.
Now it's on?
You should be good.
Great. Thank you. My name is Dan Block with Colliers Engineering Design, and I have with me Nicholas Dickerson, also with Colliers Engineering Design. So we're pleased to have been invited to come and speak with you tonight about our proposal to be the Affordable Housing Planner for the Borough of Somerville. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to read our proposal. Rather than preparing, you know, slideshow, we really felt there would be a better use of the time just to come in and have a conversation with the Board about, you know, what are the implications of the new legislation? Where do you want to see the borough go from here? What's the vision? So we can learn from you, and you can get a better understanding of where we are coming from. So, you know, just to start off with an introduction myself, I have a bachelor's degree in urban planning and environmental design from the University of Buffalo. I've been in New Jersey as a planner since 2006. And right away, as I joined Major Consulting, which is now Colliers Engineering Design, we jumped right into affordable housing. You know, 2006 was the beginning of the third round, 2008, around that timeframe. So I prepared a number of housing plans under the various versions of the third round rules, continuing into the court litigation after the 2015 court case that overturned COA. So we've been in and out of courtrooms representing municipalities all across the state. Been in Superior Court here in Somerville at the county courthouse a number of times. So very familiar with the process, very familiar with all the COA rules, the new rules, the A4 legislation. And I did do some research on Somerville, so I took a look at the master plan, and I see that Somerville has not participated in any of the prior rounds in the affordable housing process. So there are no certified plans, there's no JOR or anything like that for Somerville. Basically, my understanding is Somerville has a housing plan as part of the master plan, which just relies on the existing housing stock that the borough believes meets the affordable housing requirements and didn't need to go through the whole process. So it seems like the process has worked so far with the number of redevelopment plans, and I see there's quite a few out there on the borough's website that has been working for the borough. So, I mean, in terms of what's the risk, what's the benefits of getting into the process and looking for certification of the so-called fourth round? If the borough were to get involved, then you'd have to really go back and look at the prior round obligations and how you could meet those, or are you looking for adjustments, either a vacant land adjustment or a durational adjustment of those numbers where you don't think that those numbers can be met because you don't have the vacant land, or if you don't have the capacity of your utility systems? So those are the types of things that we would like to look at if the borough was interested in getting into that process. I mean, obviously, the risk is that you could be subject to a builder's remedy lawsuit if somebody came in and said, hey, you guys haven't met your obligations, we want to build housing, and we want to overturn your zoning. So that's always a risk. Seems like so far, Somerville's been working it out with the developers and through these redevelopment plans. So that's basically my pitch to the Board. I mean, we have a lot of experience in affordable housing. We represent a number of communities, planning boards, township planner, zoning board, so we have all the experience, and I'd really just like to understand where Somerville is like to go.
You wanna go first?
Sure. Can you talk a little bit about, Somerville is obviously, we're only about two and a half square miles, yet we have this very dynamic town of commercial corridor, residential, POR, redevelopment, five different redevelopment areas. Have you worked in any other towns from an affordable housing concept that kind of, nobody's gonna mirror Somerville, I realize that, but can you talk a little bit to that and some of the challenges in that, in an older industrial-built-out community that's trying to reinvent itself?
Yes, obviously, to answer your question, there is no other Somerville, right? So, I mean, there are...
Darn right.
That's right. Every town in New Jersey is very unique, so I have not seen anybody that's exactly like Somerville in the same situation. We do represent a number of municipalities who have, I would say, similar characteristics, not quite exactly Somerville, but we represent a number of boroughs, townships. A lot of them have been in the process from the beginning, so we're coming up with mechanisms for them to continue to achieve their obligations. I will say, I personally have not represented another municipality of this size that has not done any involvement in the COA process. So to me, jumping in, I guess this late in the game for the borough will be, I think, a challenge. I think all the mechanisms are the same. I think you have opportunities through these redevelopment areas and potential future redevelopment areas that we can look for, and I'm sure that the borough is built out, I'm sure there's no vacant land left, so there's opportunities to seek the vacant land adjustment, and then you're really just looking for, what's the unmet need? Where can you find these other opportunities to look for affordable housing units?
Thank you.
So with jumping in and, you know, us not being involved in COA and being the only ones, can you speak to the capacity you guys have to jump in and meet deadlines that, you know, be it the state or anybody else comes down with? If you have that ability, and to what capacity?
Yeah, we believe we have the capacity. It's basically meeting with the borough, with the planning board, with the council, to come up with these, what's the strategy? Where do you want to go in order to meet these obligations? That's really, meeting with the borough, we have the ability to do that, and then coming up with a plan and, you know, presenting it before the planning board and the council. We have a pretty good staff in here in New Jersey, and we know the affordable housing process, we can get through it pretty quickly. It's just working with the borough to find out, what do you want to do? How do you want to meet these obligations? And we'll guide you through the process, here are the options. These are the things you can do, these are the things you cannot do. So I think we do have the capacity to help the borough if that's where they want to go.
Go ahead, Larry.
I have a question about your thought about whether we should be just looking at affordable housing in one spot, or should we be integrating it into new development? My opinion is that it should be going into new development, not just isolated to some vacant land somewhere, because then it gets identified as being affordable housing right off the bat. That's not necessarily fair. It'd be better, in my opinion, to integrate it. Have you worked with other towns that have integrated it into their new developments to say a certain portion has to be set aside for, you know, anonymous affordable housing?
Yeah, so there's different ways to address your obligation. One of them would be to build in a 100% affordable unit building, and those kind of get that stigma, like you were saying, as this is just, you know, the project, this is the affordable building. What we like to see more often is what they call inclusionary, where you have a set aside of 20%, say, one out of five units is gonna be deed restricted to be affordable. Some municipalities will adopt an ordinance that requires any new development to meet that set aside. So, you know, any new multifamily development with five or more dwellings would have to meet, you know, that obligation. So you're setting aside at least one for every five, or 20% of those units will be deed restricted for low and moderate income. So...
So some of your existing clients over the last couple of years, can you name one or two that have used that model, the integration model?
Yeah, Hackettstown, Mine Hill. Mostly are towns that are built out and have done the vacant land adjustment. Because you can't really predict who's going to redevelop or build something new, it's just a blanket ordinance that over, you know, anything new that comes in, you've got to meet this ordinance, this set aside requirement.
Mine Hill and Hackettstown.
Those are two that come to mind immediately. I know we have others. You know, we do a lot of work in Bergen County, Morris County, so we're mostly North Jersey. A lot of our towns have done the vacant land studies and did an adjustment to come up with a realistic development opportunity, and then they do this as one of their mechanisms for the unmet need to capture any future development and make sure we get those units.
Thank you.
So to Jason's point from before, these rules are coming like a freight train. The, you know, we're looking at, I think numbers are coming out at the end of this month, then...
Supposedly.
Yeah, supposedly, yeah. The states created a very aggressive timeline. If they were to hold to that timeline, how realistic is it for the borough to be able to hold to that timeline? Which means, how realistic is it from a capacity standpoint for your firm to handle that? And how many folks would be assigned to handle Somerville to process this through? Because the reality is, you probably have a lot, a number of other clients at the same time that are going through, that, we're all going through the same thing.
Correct.
So you've got this game of numbers, you've got 564, five, five, yes, about four?
Yep.
And a limited number of planning firms. How do, who rises to the top and who doesn't?
So in terms of, we can have no problem getting the work done, getting the plans ready for adoption. I think the challenge is going to be, who's gonna cover the meeting? Most municipalities have their meetings on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of, you know, a certain night of the week, a certain week of the month. There's gonna be some overlap, so, you know, a lot of our municipalities, we've already told, you may need to do a special meeting just so that we can be there. Luckily, Nick and I both are free most Wednesdays, which I believe is when Somerville meets, so Wednesdays, I think, we're pretty good. If and when those public hearings come up, we'll be able to attend. So I think from a workload, we have the capacity, and in terms of who's gonna represent, I think we, one of us will be there.
My comments are, my question really is, you know, you asked for wanting to hear what we're looking for. I think most of us here, you've heard some of the cost questions, you know, we're looking for somebody who understands Somerville. I'm gonna go back to the mayor's original comment. We are a very unique municipality. We take a lot of pride in where we are and where we're going, and that is, we are coming upon a very unique time for Somerville, and integrating new affordable housing and/or integration, inclusion housing is another unique aspect that has to be added on top of that. So understanding where we're coming from is really that. We're not looking for cookie cutter, we're not looking for cookie cutter answers. Nothing in Somerville has been done with a cookie cutter. So no matter what planner that is, we're looking for somebody who can understand that and understand us and work with us on that. Is that something, you know, with all the, you know, to back to the point with all the municipalities that you do cover, we don't want somebody else's plan. We don't want an answer that somebody, you've given somebody else because they're, we're somewhat similar. And that's where some of that extra time, I hate using the term handholding, because I don't think we need our hands held, but, you know, walking us through of what the perfect piece is, do you feel that your firm has that to be able to accommodate some of what our needs truly are?
And just quickly, we're at one minute left.
Okay, yeah, I absolutely appreciate that. Like I said, every municipality is unique and individual. We're not looking to come in here with, you know, a rubber stamp and just throw a plan together. We understand that there's different options, and we want to work with the municipality to choose the best options. I mean, we're still limited to the scope of what's in those regulations, so the extent to which we can be creative, it's there, but we still have to comply with the regulations. So I think that's where we really want to work with you, to present you with those options and make sure you're complying and achieving the vision that the borough is looking for.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Clark? Who's up next?
Clark Catenhens.
Clark Catenhens.
Good evening.
Thank you for inviting us to Affordable Housing Planner Speed Dating. We appreciate this. Let's see if we can make this instructive for both of us, all right? Michael Sullivan, I'm a principal with Clark Catenhens, we're in Trenton, New Jersey. I'm a planner and a landscape architect. I've been a planner for 32 years. Our firm is architecture planning and landscape architecture in Trenton. The firm's been around for about 40 to 45 years, depending on what constitution it is. And we are specialists in municipal planning, redevelopment planning, and particularly affordable housing planning. That was the genesis of the starting of the firm back in the 70s to 80s. We have nine planners, seven are licensed, and when it comes to affordable housing, I like to refer to us as the SEAL Team Six, and I can give you some stories if we have time. I'm joined tonight with two of our core team. So Elaine Klisham, affordable housing expert and planner with our firm, and James Cavelli, planner who would serve on the core team. I call this the core team. These are the folks who would be, myself, James, and Elaine would be the people assigned to Somerville. But that doesn't mean that we would be the only ones you would have access to. My partner, Mary Beth Lonergan, has 40 years in affordable housing. She's one of the most widely recognized and respected court experts and affordable housing planners in the state, and you would also have access to her knowledge base. And my partner, Brian Swaugh, who also has an extensive amount of affordable housing. Both of those folks are appointed as court adjudicators in myriad cases, and their work in that realm really informs our work as we do plans for our towns, all right? In terms of the new law, we have made it a mission of ours. Internally, we meet every week to two weeks, and we've been going through the law since it passed, to understand it, to point out where there may be issues, where there's interpretive issues. If you read the law, there's ways to interpret it in different ways, and ultimately, we don't know who's gonna interpret it, but somebody will. But working on this, so we've been growing the knowledge base in our firm since it came out in March, and we continue to do that. I'm gonna let Elaine talk a little bit about the big points of the new law, and then we can work back into some questions and answers.
Great, thanks. Can everybody hear me? If I have, okay, awesome, great, thanks. I'm Elaine Klisham, I've been a planner with Clark Catenhens for five years. Almost 90% of my work probably is affordable housing work. I have helped write municipal housing plans for towns of various sizes, and I work closely with the two court adjudicators in the office on court compliance issues for the towns for which we've been assigned as their court adjudicator. And if anybody is old enough, I'm looking around the room, if anybody's old enough to remember the Somerset Messenger Gazette, if you ever placed a garage ad or a legal ad, you probably dealt with somebody from my department, because I worked here in Somerville 30 years ago for the Messenger Gazette. Okay. I want to just go over the new law very briefly, and then I'm gonna hand it back to Michael and James to talk a little bit more about sort of implementation. If Somerville does choose to participate in the process going forward, I think the biggest point about the new law is you will need to address prior obligations. It says that right in the law. Even if you've never been part of the process before, if you go into the process now, you will need to do that. So we took a look at what your prior obligation numbers might have been. It's possible that it could have been somewhere approaching 300 units since 1986 forward. There's a good chance you probably already have some of those units in existence, so the first thing we would do would be to work with you to identify what you already have on the ground. You've got a senior project, for example, we think that might be too old for original credit, but if they renewed their HUD contract, you may be able to count that for renewal credit. There are ways to reduce the obligation. If you say, oh my goodness, we certainly can't generate 300 new units, we don't have that much land, there is a process called a vacant land adjustment. This is a plan we did for the city of Lambertville. A vacant land adjustment basically says, we look at every vacant parcel in the borough and determine whether or not it could generate affordable units, and we add up all the units it could generate, and that becomes your realistic obligation, which would be lower than this total obligation. So we work with you to find existing units. I think you probably have at least two group homes, special needs facilities for adults with developmental disabilities. They count by the bedroom, so there's, you know, a certain number of bedrooms there. We have a memo that we're gonna leave behind that summarizes everything I'm talking about, and it lists all the opportunities you might have to get affordable housing credit for things you already have on the ground. So that would be to address the prior round. Then we would look forward to the fourth round. We hear that DCA is on schedule to release their numbers in a couple of weeks. We're also running some numbers just to keep them honest, but the dates that you need to worry about, should you choose to go ahead, is by the end of January 2025, you will need to pass a binding resolution stipulating to some obligation, whether it's DCA's number or another number, and if you don't use DCA's number, you're gonna have to defend how you got to the number that you're stipulating to. Then challenges can occur and be resolved. By June 30th, you will have to have a housing plan written and adopted, and that's what we are good at. We can get, we can write up a housing plan pretty quickly, as soon as we assemble the, whatever the units are that you're gonna claim toward credit. But those are the big dates, October for the numbers, January for you to agree to them, June 30th for you to get the plan in. There are a couple of new things that have to go into the plan that didn't have to go into previous plans. There are some new and different ways to get credit for units that you might have. This is all spelled out in the memo. The way you can claim bonuses is entirely different for the fourth round. They're no longer available just for rental units, but they're available for a bunch of other different types of units that you would probably be eligible for, and then there are some reporting deadlines that the new law spells out. So that's just an overview of what you would have to comply with if you move forward trying to get involved in the process for the fourth round. So I'm gonna kick it back to these two now to talk about how we might move forward toward implementation.
So in terms of process, I heard in the last talk you were thinking about process, how do you get to this? And you're, you know, every town's different, right? We work for a range of municipal-sized municipalities. Lambertville City, it's tight, but it's small. Haddonfield, Princeton. Princeton came to us in a very similar situation. This is after they had a settlement in 2020, and they needed a housing plan and fair share plan done in, what, three months?
Oh.
It was, and it was a court deadline, and they were a part of the litigation. We mobilized and we got it done. It was impressive, but we work for a variety of scales of places and different kinds of places. Some are suburban, and they don't think too much about place. You guys really are cultivating your place here and you're stewards of it. And then we work for places like Princeton and Bayonne, where it's much denser and everything's real important, how things fit together and the character of things, and keeping your culture and your fabric of your place intact. And the way we do that is that we help to create affordable housing committees with our towns. We meet with, you know, attorney, we have an attorney, planner, if the engineer's needed, the engineer's there, and then a couple of the deciders from like the planning board or governing bodies on that, and we meet regularly. And we develop, based on your planning policies and your land use policies, a real approach to this, a strategy, but that strategy reflects your vision for the character of the place, right? How does it fit? And we do try to integrate housing to the greatest extent possible, so it's not isolated and put off to the side. We really want it to be woven in the fabric committee, or community, and that's what we do. So we don't come at this and say, here's the plan, here, it's not just about the numbers for us. We're very creative in the way we think about these things. As I said, we're urban designers, we're community designers, we're architects, we're landscape architects, and we come at this from trying to make lemonade out of what might, you might bite into as a lemon. A lot of towns consider this a real burden. And we come at this from trying to make lemonade out of what you might bite into as a lemon. A lot of towns consider this a real burden. And so we're able to bring, from a creative standpoint, we can tap our architects. You know, we design multifamily projects. We design parking decks.
One minute before a question.
Okay. And, okay, so the bottom line is, we have a strategy and a process whereby we extract from you how you want to do this, and we work with you collectively. And then we're working to make sure it fits within the mechanisms permitted by law to make sure you're compliant. And I do want to say that James Gavelli lives in Somerville. He's one of the biggest cheerleaders for what's going on here. And just ask him. So I hope I didn't take too much time.
Thank you. Questions? Go ahead, Brian.
Similar question to the one asked previously. And, you know, again, Somerville, we're tight, we're two and a half square miles. But we have this dynamic of urban, residential, recreational, POR, downtown corridor, residential. It's this mix that's on top of each other. Have you worked in towns that are similar in scope to Somerville's? I don't want to say it's their challenges, but it's our character. And you spoke to the character a little bit before.
Yeah, well, you know, one of the greatest joys we have is when we work in places that have character like this, you know? And Princeton is a very similar example, I think, right? It may not have as much large retail development or other things like that or the stadium. But it's got neighborhoods, small-scale neighborhoods that butt right up against the downtown of Nassau Street. It's got historic districts, it's got the university on one side. And when we work with them, we really try to integrate affordable housing in a thoughtful way. There are historic overlays within the downtown along Nassau Street that require historic standards, but also require the integration of housing units. So it's at a scale that's not recognizing its adjacency to those neighborhoods. It's managing that scale and building it up and finding the appropriate site context, if you will, and making sure that the relationships between the buildings that are developed or whatever elements they are fit together with not just the existing lots and uses, but also with the infrastructure, the paths, the parks, right? All the amenities that a community has that brings it together. That's the way we approach it.
Thank you.
So with all the plans you've done, you know, looking back at what you had submitted earlier, have you had any challenges by courts and how have your plans held up to any challenges that they may, you know, different boroughs, towns may have faced?
I don't have any, I haven't done any plans that have been challenged. Well, people could challenge plans. They could challenge parts of it, but they have not been upheld by the courts and the last round haven't received judgments in favor of the. I mean, the bottom line is, you know, we're sticklers for making sure that it complies with the law. And if we find something that may be kind of toeing the line, then we've worked to negotiate with, whether it's Fair Share Housing Center, Court Adjudicator, or the court itself, to work through those things to make sure that we fit within the spectrum and it's conforming. Try to keep you safe.
Can you talk a little bit to that? I don't want, if everybody's okay with me jumping in. A lot of government is obviously relationships. What kind of relationships do you have in Trenton?
Are you speaking about the, you know, DCA?
Well, yeah, in general.
I mean, one of the reasons that.
DCA is the overarching, but.
Right. We have very good relationships with DCA and the folks who are actually working on this in terms of bringing up the numbers and the program. And so you can speak a little bit about that.
Yeah, let me ask that a little more specifically. DCA has absorbed the former, thank you, DCA has absorbed a lot of the former COA staff. They're in local planning services. Michael mentioned Mary Beth Lonergan in our office. She worked for COA for many years. So still has that connection. We have a lot of connections with that local planning services office to work with them on affordable housing issues.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Larry.
Go back to my question that I had for the previous applicant. Do you have clients that you have, we've existing housing with affordable housing or new development, so it's not just isolated new development?
Yes, it's prevalent in our practice to do that.
Did they do that in Princeton?
Yes, in Princeton, yes. And in fact, you know, the historic overlays that I just talked about, those are existing buildings. And so, you know, there's a historic component to retain, but there's also the addition of units. And it's not a hundred percent affordable. In the context of redevelopment, often if we have adaptive reuse, it's done in that way. So it's prevalent throughout our practice. And we encourage it.
We would build a set aside, for example, into a redevelopment plan. There are typically in a vacant land adjustment town, for example, like Lambertville, where they said they can't meet their entire obligation, but they can meet part of it. They adopt a mandatory set aside ordinance for the entire municipality that basically says if any new development comes along with five or more units, one of them must be, twenty percent must be affordable. So I would agree with Michael that the inclusionary model is prevalent. I will say one word in defense of one hundred percent affordable is that often those are financed by low-income housing tax credits, which has been an extraordinarily effective way to get affordable housing into a community in a way that doesn't look like affordable housing. It looks like market rate housing. But it's entirely financed through tax credits, or not entirely, but it's largely financed through tax credits. And they require it to be a separate lot with a separate building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and attention. Thank you for your time. You can leave that.
Kevin.
And I also brought copies, just so you have an idea who's eligible for affordable housing. We do have copies of the twenty twenty-four income limits for the regions. This is us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you very much.
Higher Grule is up next, just so you know. Are they here?
Kevin, you setting something up for them?
I am. When the laptop are closed, they shut it off. So if you're going to be speaking first before going to PowerPoint, or are you going right to the PowerPoint?
We're going to probably start with the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Good evening. John Barry with Higher Grule and Associates.
And Susan Grule with Higher Grule and Associates. We're, go through our PowerPoint, but it's great to be here. And it's great to see everything that you've done down here. It's amazing. Both John and I are from Bridgewater. And so we're kind of, this is our local territory, or it used to be at least. So it's nice to see everything that you've done and the success with it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to introduce our firm and a little bit about what we do. We're municipal planning consultants, of course. The vast majority of our work is working with planning and zoning boards, working on municipal plans, master plans. We focus a lot on redevelopment planning and planning for affordable housing, of course. The firm's got extensive experience, well over thirty years of experience. Touch on the earlier part of that if she likes, but.
No.
I've been working on affordable housing now in the most recent iterations of the process in great detail over the last ten years. So we have experience with the full gamut of the planning process, determining the obligation to the municipality, vacant land adjustments that gives us an opportunity to utilize a lot of the GIS and technology-based skills that our firm can offer. We also plan for all the different aspects of the process through the zoning, negotiating with developers, working with Fair Share Housing Center, of course, throughout the third round of the process. And then, of course, preparing housing elements and fair share plans. So a little bit about our understanding of where the borough is with planning for affordable housing. There's the historic, up to this point, third round obligation that our understanding is there hasn't been a lot of activity in terms of formal planning for affordable housing. There's certainly some housing within the borough that may qualify at certain levels of affordability. But we have a historic obligation that would need to be considered for any work moving forward. And the context that's really defined a lot of the borough's work recently, of course, is redevelopment and redevelopment projects, both where we sit and also on Main Street, West End, other parts of downtown, and then some of the projects that may still be to come.
Okay, so so everybody's going through this, municipalities are going through, oh, my gosh, what's going to happen now? We all know that the numbers are going to come out. Who knows what the numbers are going to be? But we're all, all municipalities are going to have agita about it, no doubt. You know, I consider it to be like doing your tax returns. You have to know the regulations, and you have to be creative about how you're going to address it. And so that's kind of how I look at it. And when my partner and I taught at Rutgers at the graduate school for fifteen years, and when we got to affordable housing, we would tell the students, which one of them just left, is your head's going to explode because it's so complicated and regulatory and such. But the most important piece, in our opinion, for you as a developed municipality is to utilize the vacant land adjustment because you're developed mostly. And you're not only developed, but the property that you have that's not developed, most of it is environmentally constrained. And you sure don't want to have problems with that as well. So we all know that there's a need for affordable housing. It's just a matter of how you're going to provide for it. So we like to really look at every municipality differently. We only, by the way, we only work with municipalities on affordable housing. We are not court masters. We decided that was not something we wanted to do. And we don't work for developers as it relates to affordable housing, where they may be contesting or coming into municipalities. We understand where they're coming from, but we don't work for them. So just to let that. And we have, obviously, the first piece is looking at the numbers that are going to come out. Do they make sense? Is there a way of contesting them? And you already have a relatively large obligation before we get into the fourth round. Now, we know that you have housing authority properties and units there. And you may have other opportunities with credits without controls. There are all kinds of creative ways there as well. But then there are, so once you look and make sure that you know what your number is, it would seem to us that the approach that would best be for the borough would be to take a vacant land adjustment. And we have been involved in many municipalities that have taken vacant land adjustments. One of the pieces to that is to make sure that we have the technology, the GIS expertise in our office to do the calculations that have to be confirmed in court to make sure that those numbers are correct. When you look and determine how much vacant land you have and where it is and how that's calculated, that's very important. And that you get to what's called a realistic development potential to determine exactly what your obligation is for, based upon the fact that you just don't have any places to put affordable housing. You've been highly successful with your redevelopment projects statutorily. You now have this to deal with, an S challenge as such. Rehabilitation program is another piece that you have. I know that you have probably a number of units or of housing units that could use rehabilitation. That's really a good thing in a way. It helps the residents that are here. But there are a number of ways of addressing affordable housing. We have probably used all of them. And again, it depends on which municipality we're dealing with and what your issues are and what you feel most comfortable with. And that's what we like about the challenge and the creativity, again, using the IRS example. Be creative. Think of what the options are in how you address your affordable housing obligation, which is constitutional. So, you know, can't get around that.
So the real long and the short of the process to move forward, assuming that the borough's diving headfirst into the fourth round here. We have a deadline of January thirty-first. Each municipality has that deadline to establish an obligation by resolution. That's the governing body's job. There's going to be numbers that come out at the state level. DCA is supposed to release them in the next several weeks. And assuming those do come out, what we've been advising a lot of our clients is we want to do some homework and check on those numbers with the methodology that we think is appropriate and see if we come up with something different. And the purpose of that would be to evaluate some local perspective on things that may not be caught with a broad brush. And also to, if there is a difference, make sure that there's methodology that's defensible and there's some logic behind it. Assuming we have an obligation and we have to address it, then we get into the housing element, fair share plan process, looking at all the background of demographics, current housing stock, where we've been, where we are, and then coming up with all those different mechanisms that Susan was talking about.
You have one minute left before a question.
And coming up with those different mechanisms to account for how we're going to handle the obligation. And then all of that leads into eventually ordinance amendments, redevelopment plans, affordable housing trust fund and spending plans to come up with some of those different programs and how the borough can capitalize on them.
Ta-da.
And we just have a final slide that says why we believe we're very well-suited for this position.
You just want to start, Brian?
Me again?
I'm on a roll with you.
So, you know, you've heard some of the questions before, and they're kind of repetitive to some degree. Do you have a municipality similar to Somerville in size and/or makeup, if it's not size, where you use those vacant land adjustments? And, you know, is there an experience there that you can share?
There are several where we've used vacant lands adjustments. There's some size comparison demographics, I'm not quite sure. But the, we just finished, actually, I was just in court on it, West Cape May, little town, but very much, very much of a. much of a, we had a vacant land adjustment, lot of environmental constraints as well, and we had to determine what, how we were gonna address a realistic development potential of ten units. But, so, we ended up, we ended up actually an accessory apartment program and a, and Habitat for Humanity as well. There was also a group home that also helped with that. That's one of them, we've, we've done a number of other ones as well, but that's one that comes to mind because it's right, I was down there, there was an objector.
The, so using, you know, trying to get into using vacant land adjustments, et cetera, and your experience with GIS, how do you feel your timelines wouldn't match up and your ability to get, I mean, GIS mapping typically from my understanding, isn't anything ever quick to get that completed? With these timelines, if we're looking at getting information and then building out GIS before we can even discuss what the plan is, because that's gonna dictate where our number would lie, what kind of timelines and resources do you have to get that done in those timelines?
Yeah, well, we have several staff members who are proficient with GIS, who devote a substantial amount of time to it. The lucky thing is for being in Somerset County is that there are a lot of county-level data sets available that not, that's not the case everywhere. There are some, some counties where it's difficult to even get up-to-date and accurate parcel information. So, that certainly does help in terms of a little bit of the background work and getting the baseline in place. A lot of the environmental data that goes into the analysis is, is coming from the state level, NJDP. So, you know, those resources are, are available to us, we have many of the data sets already ready to go, and we certainly have staff that can jump onto the project immediately.
Larry, you have anything?
Um, no, I think Mary asked a similar question than I was gonna ask.
Anybody have anything else?
Yeah.
So, can you talk a little bit about the group homes? And, and your experience with how they count towards affordable housing?
Sure, sure.
Ninety seconds before I have to interrupt you again.
Uh-oh. Group homes, it can be a variety of types of group homes, but it's by bedroom. And so every bedroom that's in a group home is, is counted as a unit. It's also oftentimes group home residents are low or very low income residents, so that also is something that helps, that helps, I mean, there's so many regulations about low income, low, moderate, the family, group, senior, that, that groups, group homes tends to be a very good tool, in my opinion. If you have any other, I don't know whether I'm ninety seconds or more.
He'll let you know.
You've got forty-five seconds.
I got forty-five seconds, wow. Um, yeah, I mean, group homes, I don't know what else, any other.
Do they have to be deed restricted?
Yes.
They do.
They do have to be deed restricted, but most of the time they are because a lot of times they use state funding for that, and those require deed restrictions, so it's, it's already in the packet. One of the things that we find, this kinda goes off a little bit, but some of the group homes or veterans housing or some of the other types of housing, we find that in order to really have it integrated into the community, there's the social services component to that, and a lot of the funding on the state level is now recognizing that, and they are required to provide for a social services plan.
Okay.
Particularly like veterans housing, which is so important, and yet they need the support more than just the housing. So those are the kind of, and group homes, the same way.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Colan Associates.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess I'll start with, I think you all know me, I've been around for almost twenty years. So, there's a package up there, I think it's important to know what the borough's done and what the status is. The package is the housing elements from oh eight, oh nine, and nineteen. There's an analysis done, the planning board in oh eight and nine did an exhaustive look at the COA regulations for round three, and you'll see that. The round one and two was, the, the obligation was a hundred and fifty-three, and round three, we were cranking out the numbers and going that direction, and it's probably somewhere in the two hundreds, two fifty, two thirty, but we never finished it because of the hurdle being affordability controls, otherwise known as deed restrictions. There, the borough has a federal program now called the Housing Choice Voucher Program that has right now currently a hundred and ninety-one families participating. It's been around since seventy-six, nineteen seventy-six. It also has the Senior Citizen Building, which absolutely is affordable housing, that's back in the late seventies, that's a hundred and fifty-one units. So if you start adding up the Senior Citizen Building, the Housing Choice Program, the group homes, which there's about five or six, the Agupi House, and some other transitional housing, you're around four hundred units. So if the obligation comes out, and I, I agree with most of what the other consultants have said, it's, it's accurate, with the exception that I think there's some leeway in the fourth round on some of these, on the, the deed restrictions. I don't know of the group homes, there's some flexibility there, I think, in my opinion, regarding the senior citizen, because there's more flexibility in transitional housing. So, in the past, in round three, absolutely, the borough, we had an absolute lively discussion with COA, and the COA said, no, we don't get credit, the borough does not get credit because of the lack of deed restrictions, essentially. So, that is the status of that. I also provided, the New Jersey APA had a great, great fourth round, it's in your package, of the differences from round three, round four, and the difference in, the differences between the two, and the mechanisms that are in place, the tools to meet the affordability. And you'll see the accessory dwelling units is ten percent maximum, very low, low income, which is thirty percent of the round, the region three, which the borough's in, is thirteen percent. So you can go through, obviously, I'm not gonna go through the whole package, but man, it's great, it's just great information, I attended it, and it's, it's, it really sums up well what needs to be done. And, right now, technically, we're in round three. Round three extends up until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, then, as we're all talking here, then round four begins. And the plan is to try to get this up, to start, should the board, the borough and the planning board want to do, participate, to go into round four with a fair housing plan. So, I know the redevelopment plans very well, I've written most of them, and I'm familiar with all the, not all, but many of the, the affordable nature, the group homes, the halfway houses, the transition houses that the borough has, which is very unique, given how proactive the borough was. So you have the housing element in two thousand and eight in your package, which goes over and says, in those days, using the same analysis, that the borough, the borough was affordable for low and moderate income using free market, and that was the obstacle in oh eight, oh nine for participating, is the borough received no credit, but if you looked at the rental incomes of the housing, that it was affordable, using the criteria. And then if you look at the housing element from nineteen and twenty, in nineteen and twenty, the master plan was done over, you have a copy of that housing element that is from nineteen, it was last revisions in twenty, and it basically says the borough is affordable for moderate income, not very low income, because the rents have gone up so much. So, you see the problem, it's not, it's the rental numbers that have gone up in the last decade that the free market argument is slowly going away because of the rental rates. So, the, the, the reasons to, to do this has always been the builder's remedy lawsuit and exclusionary zoning. If you participate and your plan is certified, you, you're immune or you have that basis for not having a builder's remedy. So if the borough does not participate, there's always the, the, the issue of a builder's remedy lawsuit that could be filed, it could be filed either way, but you're not participating. So that is the summary of where we are. The data's here, there's, we actually went as far, in the borough, went as far to the planning board to fill out the forms, and it's just good data, it tells you, it's good to show you what the, what the affordable is requirement for round one and round two was one fifty-three, and you can see some of the math that was done for round, for the round three, one, excuse me, one, round, one and two, it's one fifty-three. It's round three that we weren't done the analysis, and that's the growth share and the other element involved in it. But we, I have a lot of data on this because the board spent a lot of time on this in oh eight, oh nine, in the discussions, the census data, and without going into the weeds, that's which in your package, including, the borough's in the round three, which was mentioned prior, and you can see the regional income limits, but the data I'm showing you is the data we looked at ten years ago, from two thousand and ten. Obviously, those numbers have gone up, but they're used to determine what's a moderate income family, what's a low, and what's a very low. And these numbers are, when you, you plug in the calculations, this, this is what's used for determining what's affordable for the borough. So in a nutshell, you have a lot of data that's given you from basically round one all the way up to where we left it, plus the housing elements in your package. So I have the data, I, I don't need GIS, I think I have the whole town in Ariel because I've done so much design and projects in the borough, I think I have the whole town in Ariel, I have the redevelopment plans, and I have all the data because I did the housing elements. So the data's a little, look, the last data package, when the landfill redevelopment plan was done, there was a data package done on the housing element, we used that housing element into the data in two thousand and nineteen, now it's a little dated now, there's data coming out that's in the, it's in the round four regs that you'll see, it's coming out, and yes, absolutely, DCA's coming out with the obligations. Maybe in a couple of weeks, the borough's on a timeline to accept them, the clock is ticking, and the borough should just go with this to get the plans going, with the goal being this has to be in place, at least the structure, I don't know about the nuts and bolts, but the structure has to be in place by the end of July of twenty twenty-five, should the borough and the planning board wanna participate. So, I, that, you have really good information that's, that I, that I have, that the planning word's done in the past, as recently as two thousand and nineteen, to where the status is on affordable housing within the borough.
You ready for us to move to questions?
Absolutely.
Are you two gonna fight?
No.
So, so I, I think you, you may have answered this, but, you know, the, the, obviously with this thing coming down like a freight train.
Mm-hmm.
The ability to, can you, can you speak to the ability to mobilize quickly in terms of, you know, old data, new data, requirements coming down the pike, and talk a little bit to that, and, and, and your ability to manage that?
I have all the old data. I agree that should the borough participate, it has to address round one, two, and threes obligation, with the exception of rehab, rehab is not counted, but there's gonna be a number there. I, from my experience with the borough, the borough's been very good of changing policies, for example, the traffic light on East Division Street in Main Street. The DOT wanted to take the traffic light away because Division Street was made pedestrian. Well, that policy took about six months, but it was changed, and the light's there. So I think the borough has been very creative of finding solutions to these things, and I think if the borough, we can get some credit for all the proactive affordable housing, group homes, transitional housing, it's been done within the borough, it'll make a huge dent on what the obligation is. And I agree with the vacant land adjustment, and, but in my opinion, it's gonna be a much lower number if the borough's successful of getting some of these credits without the affordable, the deed restrictions. So the answer to the question on whether I can do the work, because it's just me, right? Yeah, I have most of it in-house, I'm missing the new data that's coming out, but I, you have the regulations, I have the regulations. I think I have track records showing I could knock out the regulations and get it done. Why? Because I don't work for any municipalities, I just work for Somerville, so it is my focus, so I don't have, there's no excuses not to get it done. That answers your question, Mary.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, let's keep it going right in line. So obviously, as you just said that, you know, sorry, I'm a little loud there, Somerville's your only customer, so you can dedicate your entire focus to us, which is very nice. Can you talk about, talk to the fact that, do you have any other experience with creating affordable housing plans that have to stand up in quarter, you know, for other municipalities or working with other engineers, planners, and other towns that had to create these?
I haven't done them for many other communities, I did them in oh seven, oh eight, and nineteen, we looked at them, I've looked at plans, but the answer to your question, no. It's just Somerville, and we, it's really grassroots, being that it came out of looking at the redevelopment zones, and the question came up in oh seven, oh eight, exclusionary, is the town affordable, should we, should the borough, should the redevelopment plans have affordable housing? So every, and that's where it came out of, starting in oh seven, oh eight, on looking at affordability. So the answer to your question, I've, I've been solely focused in twenty years in Somerville, solely. So I have not, I, I have affordable housing plans from other municipalities, absolutely. We actually looked at them back ten years ago, so I have them, I have not done them from other towns, that's not what I've done. I'm solely focused on Somerville for twenty years.
Anyone else?
Larry, you seem to follow me, it's kinda.
It's my job, it's what I do.
It's natural progression, we go right down the line.
So, Mike, you've already said that you have the ability to ramp up to get us to the January, the first deadlines, the October deadline, the November deadline, and the January. You have full confidence you can do that and not detract from other things that you're doing for the borough?
Yes.
This is just what you're going to be doing?
Yes, I can absolutely do it.
Part of what you've been doing all along.
I, I have seventy, eighty percent of it already in-house, I just don't, I'm lacking the number from, from DCA, whether the borough accepts the number, and the new census data, the new data to come up with the numbers. Everything else, I have. Vacant land, I know it. Redevelopment plans, I know it. Group homes, I know it.
One minute.
So, I, I have it all, so what am I missing? Just new data. That's the only thing I don't have. And, and implementation and direction from the borough, whether it's gonna, you know, the other way of doing this is to work out forced housing and not participate, and do something else. Assuming the borough wants to go this direction, it just need to, what are we doing? What's the borough doing?
And a follow-up question, you have your own ideas about what can be done, are you willing to present? Are you willing to present them as time goes forward to guide us in a particular direction?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. The borough has just been great of changing policy on the state level. There's been a lot of things done in the last twenty years to change policy because it didn't make a lot of sense. Very good. And I expect that the borough's gonna participate in this, that the policy comes out, the borough gets no credit for four hundred units because of the lack of deed, of deed restrictions. I'm confident if the borough wanted to, that policy or those rules would be relaxed or changed. Just my experience in twenty years.
Okay. That is your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate the time.
If they give me one job, it's keep track of time, I'm good.
You're good. You did awesome.
Pressure's off.
That's it. You weren't counting, you were using the phone to count. One, two, three.
No, he was doing it in his head, at the same time. Okay, if I, sorry, I gotta find my agenda now. Yes, why don't we take a two-minute break?
The cameras will be on still, just be advised, and the microphones set.
Oh, sorry, I just cut you off. I meant to hit the other one first, and then I hit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not used to speaking while I sit. It's been a long time since I had to do that. And by the way, I never reversed any of those planners. They're all great. So we're here to amend the previously approved plans here in order to add a hotel use, additional restaurant use, we're cutting down on some of the retail. There was a, a nice report done by CHA, Mr. Berensky, that indicates we have no change in the footprint here. What was done to, to do this, we'll go into some detail through Mr. Allenback, but what I was questioning was how do you turn, you know, twenty-two-foot ceilings into eleven? That's how you get these extra stories without making the building any bigger. So that's why I'm a lawyer, not an engineer. I couldn't figure out how that was gonna be done. But with the chair's permission, I would ask you to swear at or in Mr. Allenback so we can get underway.
I do.
All right, just to go back to Mark's exhibit A1, the application and supporting documents. A2 will be the proofs of notice of publication, and PV1 will be the board's conflict engineer CHA letter dated September twenty-fifth.
I'd just ask Ms. Kozinski, for you or Mr. Sluka, whose ever responsibility is, just to confirm for the record that our notices were adequate to our jurisdiction.
They were correct, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Allenback, can you give the board a little more detail in the general overview that I started to explain?
Yeah, thank you very much, members of the board. So really, as an overview, and I'll go into details, you know, a lot of things have transpo-
Everyone will accept them as-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Sorry, thank you. What's really changed here over the past few years and the dynamics really since COVID is, is what's happening in what we call the retail world. And when we originally came in, specifically for Building One, the building that's currently being finished under construction, the building was predominantly retail with a small restaurant component. Fast forward five years or six years, and what our leasing people is telling us is that retail has really slowed down, and that what's become of the retail world is now what we call personal service, and then you have food and entertainment, so you have the restaurants. And so we had a cap on the original application and approval for Building One, and it just wasn't enough for the kind of restaurants that we're looking to put in there and the food uses. So leasing office came to me and said, we need to change this and go back and get it flipped, so to speak. So change the predominant retail and small restaurant to predominantly restaurant with small retail. That gives us a lot of flexibility when you're talking into these food services, and, you know, when you have a thirty thousand square foot footprint and you start entertaining an eight thousand square foot restaurant or a six thousand square foot restaurant, you've already blown yourself out of the water with your prior approval, and then forget about all the little restaurants type eateries that we want to put in there. So that's what started the process. So, you know, as indicated by the board professionals' letters, the footprints on all three buildings that we're here to talk about tonight is unchanged. You know, they're still a five-story building. Buildings one and two still have retail on the first floor with four floors of residential above it. The building five, which is the last building to be built and in development, is still slated as what I called always was a five-story building, still is a five-story building, still seventy-five foot height, which is permitted by the redevelopment plan. What's different about Building Five is when we came in originally, we had retail on the first floor, and then we had a two-story gym. But the gym itself, because of being a gym, occupied two floors each. So the gym floor and the second floor was actually the second and third floor, and so forth on the fourth and fifth floor. What we've done now is, when you divide it up, you're able to put in those lower ceiling, and now you could do, we're proposing tonight, which is the food court on the first floor, a spa, high-end spa on the second and third floor, and then the hotel use on the fourth and fifth floor. So it's the same exact building height, same exact building look. For some of the board members that were here when we came in, it was important to the board and the board's professionals, when we did the building, even when it was the gym, it had the look of a five-story building. So even though the gym was occupying two floors per floor, it still looked, it had five rows of windows, so it still looked like a residential building to match what was next door in Buildings One and Two. So as it relates to Building One, the only change is what we say we'll call the flip-flop from the restaurant to the retail. So we increased the restaurant by seventeen thousand four hundred and sixty-two square feet, decreased the retail by twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-one square feet. That's really the only change in Building One. Building Two, its smaller change is we increased the restaurant by thirty-four hundred and ninety square feet, and we decreased the, I'm sorry, increased the retail by fourteen hundred and seventy-five. Now, somebody might say, wait a second, how'd you pick up square footage? The leasing office that's in Building Two will now be moving over to Building One. So the leasing office that's adjacent to Wolfgang's and everything is, was there, always there temporarily, even though it's been ten years, it now will be moving over into its final location, which is located in Building One. So that's why there's additional square footage being picked up in Building Two. Residential's unchanged, one hundred and fifty-three units in Building One, one hundred and eight units in Building Two, unchanged, everything from the second floor up is unchanged. Now we go to Building Five. Building Five, obviously, is the building yet to be built. What we are proposing to this board tonight is to convert what was previously retail to a food court use on the first floor. We've had success on some of our other developments with this food court concept where you have a variety of food uses come into an open concept. What I'll, I'll compare it to almost like a cafeteria type of situation where you walk in, or if you go into an enclosed mall and they have the food uses with all the seating, where you have your opportunity to select whoever you wanna, wherever you wanna eat, and then you have the opportunity to sit out there. The idea is to have an open system where there could possibly be garage doors and nano doors that kind of open up during the nice weather, spill out into the outdoor seating area, and that's really what we're proposing on the first floor. If the board may recall, the first floor is smaller than the upper floors. The first floor itself, the footprint's only about twelve thousand square feet, where the upper floors are twenty thousand square foot each. There's an overhang on the western side or towards the deck. Now you get up to the second and third floor, that's gonna be what we're gonna call this, this high-end spa. That'll be open to, obviously, to the public. A high-end spa will occupy the second, third floor. They have a variety of services they provide. We do not have a tenant for that yet, because obviously we need to get the board's approval to move forward, but we have had interest from some spa users to take that and occupy that, what I'll call forty thousand square feet of the second, third floor. The last part of the puzzle, so to speak, is something that we're excited about, is to being what we call a boutiquey hotel or a smaller type hotel, which will occupy the fourth and fifth floor. I know when we go through CH's letters, there were some discrepancies between what was on the architectials and what was on the site plans. I will tell you that, you know, it's a work in progress, if you will. The building itself, because it's so deep, you know, it's a hundred by two hundred feet, it's not conducive for residential or hotels, because what do you do in the middle? You know, everybody needs a window. If it's residential or a hotel, you have to have an outside window. So what do you do? You can't have, you know, fifty-foot-deep units. So we're struggling with the numbers. So when the architect first looked at it, he came up with the forty number. We think we can get them up to sixty by, you know, being creative, put some amenities in the middle. So we're seeking for an approval for up to sixty rooms is what we'd be seeking from this board tonight. And if it ends up being fifty-five or fifty-four, because that's all we could fit, then I'm hoping that would be done either administratively, because it's less. If we have to come back, we have to come back. But that's the intention with the hotel. The rooftop amenity, which is something that has been designed on this site for a long time, is a pool and lounge area for the residents, as well as approximately, I think it's around two thousand square feet, yeah, two thousand square foot bar lounge area that, that, again, to be determined whether it's open to the general public, whether it's a membership. We haven't gotten that far into the design of the, the pool deck. But the pool itself is intended to be just for the residents only. So the pool deck and the pool itself would be just for the residents of our two buildings. But again, there's a small, if you look at the floor plans, which we'll go through in a few minutes, you see there's a small bar area or a seating area next to it, and it's about two thousand square feet. That's something that may be open to the public, but to be determined at a later date.
For the record, I'd point out that those numbers that Mr. Allenback went through, how much up, how much down, they're in Mr. Berensky's page two. The tables are all there and lays it all out very neatly and very concisely. And I had the same question about how you had a reduction without making the building bigger, so.
So if it's appropriate, if you look at the architectials, which is on the, the plan here, the conceptual, this is the first floor, which really shows what the food court would occupy. There's obviously a lobby that'd be utilized for the hotel use. There's what we refer to as back of house, you know, for the various uses. There's utility rooms. There's a small residential lobby off of what we call the alleyway between Building One and Building Five. And then you have, in light blue, facing south, Davenport would be the, the food court area itself. Whoops, sorry. And then when you get up to the upper floors, you see, again, it's a, a rough layout, conceptual plan for the, the spa, and it shows various rooms, and, and obviously, that will be more detailed once we get a little closer to, should we receive approval, get closer to a lease with a tenant. And then if you look at the, the hotel use on the left-hand side here, again, you see what I'm talking about, where the rooms can only be so deep. And so you have this core in the middle that's open up, then what do you do with that area? So we're trying to get creative, and that's why we talked about up to sixty rooms for that hotel use itself. This screen that's in front of you too, which is, I believe, page four of the set, this is the rooftop area. As you can see, if you can follow my mouse, this area over here is what's labeled as the bar lounge area, and then outside here is the seating area for that bar area. Again, you have the bathrooms, you have the elevators, the lobby and everything, and then you have the pool deck itself, which is the, the pool itself, and then you have, obviously, the chairs and the amenities around it that go with the residential portion of it. But this two thousand square feet area here is what I talked about potentially being open to the public or a membership or however we decide to move forward with that. And then the last thing is the building architectials. Again, seeing that you have the, the retail component on the, on the lower level, and then you have, this is looking from the deck to the back of the building. So you see, this is the, the bridge, if you will, that connects Building Five and Building One that's yet to be built. So it, when this building is built, there will be a connection via a bridge from Building Two over to Building One, the bridge that was just recently installed, and then ultimately over into Building Five for residents that they're ever gonna use, that go to the spa, go to the pool, they could walk through the entire building without going outside. So this is the view from what we call the back of house, sorry, from the deck. And then this is the front view that you'd see off of, of South Doughty. Again, you have the storefronts here, and then you have windows above that represent the two floors of the medical, a medical spa, the, the day spa, and then the two floors of the hotel above that. And then you have the rooftop amenities here, where you have like outdoor-type cabanas for the residents to sit underneath for shade. You have the, where I talked about before, the bar area, lounge area here, and then you have some covered area, trellises areas that's over closer towards veterans. And then this is the view from inside the alley, if you will. If you're looking from Building One, this is the, the connection, the bridge connection on the second floor that gets you from Building One over into Building Five. Madam Chair, if it's appropriate, I'd like to go through the CHA letter.
Please, yes.
Referring to the CHA letter dated September- Referring to the CHA letter dated September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. As Mr. Wilson indicated, on page two, there's a summary of the changes, which is where a lot of my numbers that I referred to earlier came from. I believe I covered most of the testimony, or most of the responses in this via testimony. So number three, I believe I covered with outlining exactly what's transpiring in the three buildings. Number four is the discrepancies. We agree to comply with that. Building, number five is the building height, which I confirmed is the same height of seventy-five feet, which was previously approved. Number six is the hotel discrepancy between the rooms, which I believe I clarified that. Seven, I spoke about the pool and the rooftop and the operations in the two thousand square-foot bar slash lounge area. Number eight, I need a little bit of direction, maybe from the board or the board professionals. A question came up about the emergency generator, and the question I had asked was, I know there's a requirement for the residential buildings, and we do have one in building two, and there will be one in building one, whether or not it was required for a commercial use. And I know you have the hotel, and somebody may look and say, well, it's a hotel, it's kind of a quasi-residential. Obviously, I'm just not sure if it's required by code. We do have the appropriate emergency services based in building one, but via the generator, which is obviously the emergency lights, the elevators. We do have areas in the leasing office and the main lobby for residents to charge their phones and everything that's appropriate with your, the mandates of the emergency access plan. But it was unclear with building five. The hotel residents will obviously have access to get, there's a bridge, have access to get into building one in event of emergency. I'm just not sure if it's required by code. And we haven't made that decision yet. I'm not saying we're not doing it. I just don't know. Obviously, if it's required by code, we would do it. If it's not required, we would have to discuss it, ownership, and discuss it, and see if it's something that we would do there.
We would look to the, to the board and council and consultants to tell us. The way I read the ordinance, this is not a residential use, but as Mr. Almbach indicated, it's sort of quasi, because there will be people, even if it's short-term, overnight. So if your interpretation of the code is it's required, we obviously will comply. If it's not, we think it's safe anyway, but we'll be guided by your collective judgment.
I think it's falling into a gray area, as you're saying. But with residents, I mean, I know there are hotel residents, there are residents, and there are people in there. I, you know, I would interpret it that it would still be required, at least for the hotel portion.
Yeah, I would also say that just because people are there as hotel guests by definition, they're not anywhere near their home, whereas the people in building one and two are in their homes. So if we're having a situation where it's a shelter-in-place issue in building one and two, but the people who are in three, they have nowhere to go. We want them to be able to shelter in place for real. They have nowhere to go. So a generator and just basics is not gonna, it'll be better.
Yeah, this is not a serious pushback.
Yeah.
No, 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 I'm just saying that, I'm just.
It's a word residence in law, Ms. Kuzin, she could probably tell you her view of it, has a special meaning. It doesn't mean hotel, but we understand the concern. And as I said, I think both of us said from the get-go, if the board thinks that that's a requirement, we'll absolutely do it.
And I think that's why we were saying it's a gray area, because, you know, this is a unique, we haven't had a hotel before. So I don't think the, I think the intent was to ensure that all of our, let's quote-unquote, residents, either temporary or permanent, are, have a way to be able to be sheltered in place with no other, you know, nothing coming in to have to do that. It's already there.
And I believe it is included in our redevelopment plans. I don't know if it's in this one, because this was one of the earlier ones.
This is earlier.
But it, it may, and that's something we'd have to take a look at. I don't have it with me, sir.
Take a look at it, and if the board imposes it as a condition, obviously, we're going to do it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Number nine, I am confirming there's no additional signage or lighting, other than it was previously approved. I will tell you that, you know, once we secure a hotel operator, we'll probably be coming back for some kind of signage on the building. I just don't know what that signage would be, but obviously, probably something up on the upper levels. Size and, you know, materials and everything to be determined, once we secure a tenant.
There's not an intention to put signs out by the food court areas with the roll-up doors or the swing doors?
Yeah, what I indicated was, we previously got approved facade signs that meet the ordinance. And that's what we would just continue to propose, facade signs that they're entitled to by ordinance, nothing above and beyond. So I don't need any variances, but they will get signage.
But the difference is that now there's five different doors, five different businesses, that's five different signs.
Correct.
So there has to be a little bit of.
Well, if you recall, the last time it was five separate retailers, too, because it wasn't one, just, it wasn't just one big box. It was five twenty or twenty-five-foot stores. So we received approvals for five tenants when it was retail, and we're doing the same thing now. Again, and your ordinance is, your ordinance is clear, and it gives that flexibility if you do have multiple tenants. It talks about the size of each individual sign, but it recognizes when you have a multi-tenant building that you're going to have multiple signs. And there's a number that you can't exceed for overall signage, there's height requirements, there's all that stuff. We're going to comply with that, which we don't need any relief from this board. And if we do need relief, we'll be back.
Yeah, I think the only thing you may have to comply with is the architectural review board.
Correct.
You may have to come for the aesthetics.
Correct.
Yep.
Number ten is, will comply, as well as eleven, that's just additional water and sewer permits that we'll need because of the increase with the restaurants. Number twelve, I'm going to defer to our traffic engineer, because I think he just wants to put a little bit of testimony on the record for that, and that'll, should address everything under paragraph twelve.
Other agency approvals?
Again, we'll comply as necessary.
I had a secondary question related to the construction code. The other buildings that you have, they were like concrete on the ground floor with wood above. But a pool, seventy-five feet off the ground, is probably going to need steel in order to support that. Is that crazy, or?
No, that's what the code would be. The only reason the other buildings were that was because it was residential.
Right.
This is a commercial grade, so it would be steel-concrete construction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, that would present, that would be Mr. Almbach's testimony, subject to questions of the board and the public.
Anybody have any questions?
I know you said you're going to touch back on the parking. It's always fun, so.
That's why I'm giving it to somebody else.
In item six, you, you know, you had mentioned that studio units and one-bedroom units and two-bedroom units. Those are just simply a one-bedroom hotel room. It's not a permanent residence. Or a two-bedroom unit, it's not a permanent residence, it is a hotel room.
Correct.
Still.
Yeah. These are, this is, out of CHA letter, those are intended to be the hotel rooms, not actual units.
Not the actual apartments, okay.
Correct.
Clarifies it, thank you.
So I guess my only question is the approval of up to sixty, when if, because on the drawings, it's only forty right now. So I guess my only concern would be is, I know you want to get creative and get some more in there, but how that's going to look and what that's going to change the dynamic of if they're one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, studios, and what that ends up being and how they end up looking, as in how creative you're getting with that. I guess that would be my only concern on that one, is if we're just approving it based on no drawings and seeing the counts and how they're going to be.
The only thing I could recommend is, I know that there's a subcommittee that is available, I don't know if that's still in place, you know, for changes like that, that we came in, and if there's obviously changes that the subcommittee felt were warranted, going back to the board, because it changed the aesthetics of the outside of the building, or if it was something where it changed the overall dynamics of the bedroom mix. I mean, when we talk about the bedrooms and the hotel units itself, you know, if you're even getting creative, you're not going to get any more twos, you know, you're not going to get a large, you know, three-bedroom type or, you know, larger units. It's going to end up going down to more ones and studios, just to get that number up, because you have to build them around the perimeter of the building. But again, I understand the concern, but not knowing that answer, I really didn't want to get locked into forty if I can. If the architect can get creative and gets forty-five, and not have to come back to the board for a full-blown amen to site plan application.
Right, because we're only talking about the floor plan of the individual units. So nothing from the outside would change, it would all be the same. But you might have more one-bedroom units, less suites, kinds of things. So the outside of your building would be the same, your windows would all be in the same places, everything would be internal. Whether or not, my view that that's an administrative-type change would carry the day with your committee, we'd have to wait and see. But I don't want to be in a situation where someone says that we're doing something untoward by coming back. You know, we want to be upfront with you and say, look, we don't know if we can fit sixty in, but we don't, we're not asking for any more than that. And our traffic person will testify that everything's fine and dandy with sixty and give you the basis for his opinion. So if we, we're only approved for forty because you can't see the floor plans, then, you know, it's sort of like we come hat in hand, well, please, can we have more? We'd like to resolve that today if we could, because really, the only thing we're changing would be the floor plan of an individual unit. So instead of it being, you know, fifteen by fifteen, maybe it's twelve by twelve. But from the board's perspective, you know, there's not a density issue under the redevelopment plan, so we would really ask for it.
The forty, the sixty to forty spread is really architecturally driven, it's not market-driven, is that?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Is that something that we could defer to the ARB then as well?
Do we still have a subcommittee?
For the ARB?
No.
Yeah, I know there was a subcommittee, I think that came after, yeah, I was never.
We have, we haven't used it in a bit, but we have still, it still exists.
Well, we would certainly encourage the board to give us the approval of up to sixty, subject to the architectural review subcommittee.
What did we call the?
Field cha- um, field change.
Field change committee, thank you. I know it wasn't the, but we can still defer to where it would be.
I have a little condition together, I'll, I can say at the end and see if that, that works.
Yep.
I think we could certainly do that with some controls on it.
Sure.
Yeah.
If you're looking for, but still protected.
Hey, we've been here a while, you know us, we're not looking to pull a fast one.
And we've done it before, and the committee said this is a little bit above, you got to go back to the board, and we did, right.
Yeah.
So we understand that and respect that.
Yeah, I just wanted to be reflected somehow in the resolution that that is an open issue that we did discuss. We didn't just spring it on anybody.
Yeah, thank you.
That's Kara's job.
Normally, I know my way, and normally, I'd be dead-set against you about this kind of stuff. But not in this case. If this is an architectural issue and it's not changing the outside of the building, and you're just trying to put ten pounds of stuff in a five-pound bag, okay, as long as it's not too small with the units. And do they all have bathrooms?
Yes.
I suppose, as opposed to what?
No, I mean, European-style bathroom down the hall, that kind of thing.
Right, there are between.
Twelve-foot rooms.
There are smaller hotels that have a shared bathroom.
Because I have a hotel that everyone at my house with a twelve-foot bedroom, you know. I told them.
I mean, to your point, Mr. Cleveland, you know, you know, there's going to be a fine line that we have to walk with, with the tenant. I mean, you're going to get to the point where I can't just sit there and say, I'm going to make all two hundred square-foot rooms, because that's what I could squeeze in there, and then I can't lease the thing as a hotel or a tenant, a hotel operator.
It will be driven by the marketplace, you know, whether it's Marriott or Hyatt or whoever. They're not going to come in, be a tenant, if they don't think these are usable. So we'll be doing this in consulting as we go along with these national providers in order to determine what works best.
Thank you.
Anything else for?
Oh, yeah, so I have a question, and my concern is more have to do with the pedestrian safety on the ground and the roof deck. I'm not sure if you could speak a little bit about any, any safety measures that are in place. You know, we have, you know, chaise lounges, patio furniture. We're going to have possibly a bar lounge area up there as well. And, you know, not only, you know, possibly somebody throwing something overboard, but, you know, wind. And, you know, what is the operations as far as will the patio furniture go in at night, or will it stay out?
So, yeah, great question. So the cabanas themselves are anchored to the deck itself to prevent that, because obviously, you can't control wind. And, you know, the chairs themselves, they're heavy metal chairs. So again, barring a storm, they don't need to go inside at nighttime. But obviously, we have a situation on another place we have where, during inclement weather, they have to pack them up and put them, you know, and tie them down, whatever you have to do. There is a small glass fence, if you will, around the perimeter on the wall itself to protect people from leaning over, you know, the roof itself. Now, to your point, it can't stop somebody from throwing anything off the roof, that's why we have staff there. But we are taking measures to make sure that, you know, because we have, obviously, there's pedestrian access around all four sides of the building, to make sure that the building is safe. And once we get into the architectural portions of it, and further on with the construction documents, obviously, those will be all reflected in there.
And congratulations on coming onto the board.
Thank you, thank you. And one more question, I'm not sure if it's for you or if you're going to punt it to your traffic engineer. More about deliveries and operations when, so it's a change of use now, you're going to restaurants. I'm assuming you're going to have different delivery vehicles. I do see you do have a loading area. Just want to see how that's going to work operation-wise.
Yeah, again, so based on even when it was just retail before versus the food use, we have the loading area that's located on the southern side of the building. And just like a lot of our other tenants, the deliveries are dictated in the lease as to what they can. I can't, we're not allowing somebody to come in with a WB sixty-seven because they can't navigate through the site. So when we initiate the leases with any tenants in town center, that's, except for ShopRite, obviously. But, you know, that's something that we have to put in there as to what can adequately get into the site and function and maneuver throughout the site. You're welcome.
Anyone else? Or do you want to bring up the?
You go next witness, not public.
We'll do public after.
Mr. Sekler?
Yes, I do.
Matt, can you give the board a summary of your credentials, professional with traffic engineering?
Yes, my name is Matthew Sekler, that's S-E-C-K-L-E-R, I'm with Stonefield Engineering Design. Address is ninety-two Park Avenue, Rutherford, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I'm also recognized professional traffic operations engineer by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Been accepted for over a hundred and fifty boards in the state as a traffic engineer.
Testified here before?
I believe I have, yes.
I'd ask the board to accept Mr. Sekler as a licensed traffic engineer?
We accept.
License in good standing?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So Matt, there's a couple of things that Mr. Barinski pointed out and things that were raised by the board. Give the board the benefit of your expertise and opinion in conjunction with how these changes will or won't affect the traffic patterns.
Yep, absolutely. And again, in terms of the vast majority of the parking that is related to the site is kind of out there today. The pieces that we're kind of adding, the changing some retail to some restaurants, the hotel use itself, these are pretty low parking generators compared to what you already have out there today. And having been to the site before the parking garage was built, I have definitely noticed that since the garage was built, things have loosened up in the, in the surface lots, and the parking garage also is not at its capacity. So when, as we, you know, bring on or change the uses and go forward, we do expect those parking spaces to continue to be available, and there will be sufficient parking in the peak conditions. To come up with that conclusion, we performed what's called a shared parking analysis. Essentially, as everyone's aware, if you kind of watch a parking lot throughout the day, there are different varying peaks throughout the day. You see residential basically parked there at night during the weekdays. During the, you know, weekends, you'll see a lot of people, let's say, coming to the shop right in the middle of the day. But when the retail, the restaurants peak, they tend to peak a little more at night. So you kind of have a fluctuation of parking, so you don't have every use maximizing the parking lot at the exact same time. You don't have ShopRite, you know, at midnight, the same time as it's at its peak, at the same time the residential's at its peak, same time as the restaurant, that doesn't happen. Basically, they kind of all fluctuate throughout the day. And our shared parking analysis looks at hour by hour, weekday and weekend, when would those peak times be, when they're all kind of reaching their near maximum.
Now, Mr. Barinski raised the question about which edition of the ITE manual you use. Can you clarify that?
Yeah, when we did begin this, the analysis of the site, we were using the fifth edition of the ITE Parking Generation Manual. That's the source that provides us this data of, you know, the varying levels of parking and throughout the day. As was mentioned in the review letter, the sixth edition is out now. We did rerun the numbers since we've gotten this review letter. There is some slight changes on the weekdays. The parking demand that we saw at the peak would actually go down, thirty-eight cars. On the weekend, it would go up about seven cars. So there's a slight variation if we use the new addition. But overall, based on our analysis, we expect there to be, even with this development, a little more than about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty empty parking spaces, even at the worst time period in the day or in the week, which we determined was Saturday at noon. So Saturday at noon, which would be when the most people would be parked in the site, for the restaurants, for the retail, for the residential, for the hotel, there's still about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty empty parking spaces somewhere on the site. They may not be right in front of your favorite restaurant, but they're gonna be on the site somewhere.
How does that square with his comment number three, that possibly a different use category should have been used for those calculations?
Yeah, so that, that is the fifth edition publication, which we utilized, did not have that, what they call kind of like a smaller shopping plaza as opposed to shopping center. When we reran it using the newest edition, that sixth edition, we did utilize that new land use code, which was that shopping plaza between forty thousand square feet and a hundred thousand square feet, that, that was a new data set that was included within the new.
So does that affect your opinion at all?
No, again, our site can support even utilizing those new numbers, again, our, our data for Saturday would be off about by seven total parking spaces, and again, that's, there's more than seven empty spaces based on our analysis. There was also a question about the generic food court, we have, we can't confirm if there'll be breakfast, but it's possible that, you know, maybe one or two of the little tenants that are providing spaces, maybe a bagel or a muffin or a coffee place. But with most kind of food court, food hall type operations, you wouldn't expect all of them to be open at breakfast, you really would see the maximum either be kind of like a lunchtime, dinner time type of operation. So again, while we are not ruling out the breakfast time period, that's not when this parking lot is at its peak, again, it tends to be at its peak either at, at middle of the day on Saturday, or at six P M. on a weekday, if you kind of left work. There was also a question about the ten parallel parking spaces, kind of located where the hotel front door would be. Those would be parking spaces, but we likely would indicate them to be kind of short term, whether it's ten minute drop off pickup type of operations, that's what those ten spaces would be, we wouldn't want people to be parked there continuously. But it seems like a great spot to, if you wanna wheel some luggage in, or someone's waiting to be picked up, that's a good spot and convenient rate to the west of the building five.
And for the, for the record, if the board thought some kind of a sign with a particular identification to that effect was appropriate, we would not oppose that at all.
Other than that, I do wanna confirm our analysis was taking into account the sixty hotel rooms, so again, if it ends up sixty, we've accounted for that in our analysis, if it's less, it'll only, you know, continually just knock off the amount of cars that would be at its peak in the lot.
And you, and you are, you're consistent with paragraph F, which concludes, as you do, that there's a decrease in peak hour generation?
Correct, yes.
With these changes?
Yes.
That, that covers Mr. Berensky's comments and questions and clarification requests, and our traffic testimony. Of course, we're available for questions from the board or the public.
I have a question, and it's just the parking spaces, the gentleman just said that you would, the ten spaces that are around the front that you'd use for a drop off pickup, you would designate that as a drop off pickup area no longer than ten minutes, like you see in most hotels that you go to.
Exactly.
Now, for your hotel guests, are you going to have designated spaces for them where it says, these spaces are for the hotel guests, or they're gonna have to randomly find spaces?
At this point, they would have to randomly find spaces, but it's possible, depending on the tenant, that there could be areas that are, you know, kind of designated whether in the garage or not. But at this point, we would have them look for their parking spaces on their own within the lot. And there, and there would be valet, so you do have the ability to have the, you know, leave your car at the front and have a valet individual park it, so, you know, while it wouldn't be individual people hunting for parking, it would be the valet person.
Good question, though.
I, I have a question about the, the math calculations, without having a single person living in building one, the new building. There's not a single tenant in there yet, there's not a single tenant on the ground floor, how are we calculating, just based on what building two had, just on square footage, but if you have a more intense use in the newer building, never mind the hotel or the other amenities, that's gonna, that's gonna skew the numbers. These numbers have always seemed to be vague, or tight, or mathematical gymnastics on how many times we're using or counting the same spot sometimes, it just seems that way, maybe I'm just not understanding. But if there's a finite amount of spaces and we, and you haven't even counted the apartments, like you haven't really seen it in operation to say, this is gonna work.
So the benefit from the apartment standpoint is the apartments do have parking spaces within the garage, so what, you know, I'd say general public is experienced, they're experiencing, you know, the, the peak, the peak parking near the ShopRite, or the back of the restaurants, or near the wine store. The residents that have not moved in, they're moving into the, they're parking in the garage, so they're not taking up any of the spaces that are kind of out there in the parking lot, so that's, you know, somewhat out of sight, out of mind. And that is, again, I think a benefit, you know, to this project, and I agree, when you drive by the site before that garage was built, and you said, hey, look, we're gonna love, add in all this residential, and we're gonna add in all this, you know, additional retail and the hotel, no way it would work. But again, having the parking garage, every, every unit is getting a parking space in that garage, all those tenants basically move over there, and then the empty spaces you see today, that's where the, you know, the retail spaces, the new retail spaces will come online, they'll start occupying those. One of the other benefits is the kind of shared experience on the site, on the site, is the fact that you're gonna have a lot more people be able to utilize one parking space but go to multiple places. Again, you'll be able to food shop, have an additional restaurant to go to, maybe go on the spa, so again, it's not three people, three cars going to each spot, it could be one car going to three different places, and I think that's what makes it the town center, is that you could park once and go to multiple places.
Okay, and I have a follow-up question for Ron. The property across the street that we've been talking about for about six or seven years, the old Asian market next to Mannion, the old bodega, the old shoemaker, the old Yokohama, and then add one sixty-six into it, is there still an intent to park across the street?
So it's unclear about one sixty-six, because we haven't gotten that far yet, if you may recall, when we received the approval for one fifty-four, we were required to de-restrict thirty, I think it's thirty spaces in the deck for one fifty-four, that's unchanged, that'll still be there.
So that, it's those spaces and?
They're part of Matt's analysis, correct.
Okay, thank you.
And just for the record, I would point out, it's not just Matt that's saying there's less traffic, your consultant indicates, he used the word overall slight, but decrease. So the amendments we're proposing, not probably appreciably, to be honest, but it lessens the impact, not makes it, not make it worse.
But that's also now, today, post COVID, five years down the road, it might be a different world, it might be worse, or it might be crazy.
Certainly true, Mr. Cleveland, but when you use those I T E standards that everybody uses, it takes into account all those things, so, you know, it, look, is it a mathematical scientific fact? No, if anybody tells you it is, you know, we would never hire, but we get it.
And luckily, again, I'm not saying, hey, listen, we have a one thousand thirty-eight spaces and we're at one thousand thirty, and we got eight spaces to play with, we've got like ten to twelve percent extra. So again, some fluctuation, get a, a great successful business, you know, you got some room to grow, if you have a unsuccessful business, you got plenty of parking.
Thank you very much.
Any, go ahead, John.
Yeah, so I, I kind of have a follow-up question, so I'm not too familiar with the deck itself, so there is designated spaces for the residents, and how many spaces are there in that deck or on the lot itself?
I believe it's two hundred and sixty-one residential parking spaces in the deck, the remainder is the public spaces.
Okay.
And that's, I mean, that's gated, so the residents only can get in through a key fob or something like that.
Okay, that, that comes to my follow-up question then, so, you know, we're using a shared parking analysis, assuming that all the parking lot spaces can be shared, when you have, you know, two hundred and sixty-one that technically are not available to the public.
Yeah, when we reran the analysis utilizing the latest.
And they don't use the shared parking, though?
Yes, yeah, when we utilized, when we reran it utilizing the latest version, we also limited the ability for any of those spaces to be shared. And again, our numbers were consistent with, again, about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty, depending on what hour it was on Saturday, that there'll be available spaces, but counting that, yeah, two hundred and sixty-one spaces off limits to the general public.
Okay, yeah, I think that's very consistent, I, I came up with about seven hundred spaces on peak non-residential, and it looks like you would have about seven hundred left.
Yep.
Anyone else, any questions for either professional? All right, I'm gonna open it up to the public for questions as it relates to this application. Can you come up, state your name and your address for the record, please?
Sorry, just a question, is there a question?
Any questions and comments?
You're gonna have to hit the on button on that microphone, I don't think leave it's on.
Ron. Hi, Jeff Carlson, forty-one Van De Vera Avenue, question, just two things, that, some of it's a destination place, people are coming here to see us. So you're gonna have this rooftop bar, and use it to, to be determined if it's gonna be for the public, and I say, yes, it should be for the public. And also that food court area, is there any way a possibility that it could be a food court, but plus maybe an event place, because we don't have a big place like that, so are there possibilities for that? That's it.
Again, as far as the rooftop bar, you know, ownership is still considering that, there's, there's liabilities involved, there's a lot of other things that are above my pay grade to answer that, that's why we're still looking at that. As far as an event space, again, that's something I could take up with ownership, and see if that's something they'd be open to, understanding that there is a need in the borough, and it's certain we could work, work with the mayor and council on that if it's appropriate.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll close public comment. Can you do a rundown of where we're at, please?
So, they have applied for amended preliminary and final site plan approval, no additional variances necessary, correct, there's no other relief necessary other than amended. The conditions that I came up with are, obviously, all prior conditions that are not amended by this amended approval would remain, with regard to the maximum number of sixty rooms, that would be a condition that what you're approving, should be decided to do that, would not exceed a maximum. However, the final design as a number would be presented to the field change committee, and they must return to the board if, number one, more than sixty rooms are ultimately proposed, or number two, the field change committee feels that the design should require board approval. Compliant to all comments in C H A's letter, as per the testimony, the emergency generator referencing item eight will be provided for building five hotel portion irrespective of whether required by code. The applicant will return to the board and/or the A R B as necessary for signage approval that differs from the prior approvals, there was a representation, you had five signs previously approved, or as required if there are new variances based upon what the new signages. Amend the plans to reference rooms and not units for the hotel rooms, just so that's clear. A sign or signage will be installed for the parallel parking spots in front of the hotel entrance, and this is up to the board, or you can leave it up to the board's professionals, if you wanted to say ten minute parking, drop off pickup and valet, you know, what type of signage do you want there? And then one other thing I thought, just for the board's consideration, there was a comment with regard to the rooftop and how certain things are gonna be addressed. I have had some situations where the applicant or the tenant or the operator, whoever it is that's gonna be dealing with that, can provide some sort of written safety plan to let you know what's gonna be up there, how it's gonna be dealt with, are they gonna be anchored, are they gonna be taken in, you know, what, what the plan is in certain situations, just so the borough has, has an idea and can have some kind of input. That's what I have.
So I'll, I'll move it based on those comments, as far as the signage, I think that, for the ten minute parking or whatever is, can be dealt with later, I don't.
We can leave that up to the consultant with the board's professionals.
Yeah.
I do have a question then, just generated.
Go ahead.
What are you guys gonna do with like, air conditioning units and rooftop heating, air conditioning is all gonna be internal to each room and each office space that's?
Yeah, that's. Sorry, yeah, that's the tricky part about building five, because typically the residential units or the hotel rooms would have individual units in each room, but then what ends up happening is you, you have the common areas that you have to, and that's where you end up throwing the condensers on the roof. We're gonna have to find a home for those, and I, I don't know that, as we speak, they obviously will not be in plain sight, wherever they are, they'll be hidden either through a parapet, or if they're on the ground, they'll be landscaped, and we'll work with, on the board's professionals to make sure that it's just not, condensers out in the middle of nowhere. But we have to, that's a challenge when you have a rooftop amenity.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair, point of information, if I might.
Sure.
A clarification from Kara, the idea of the safety plan obviously is a good idea, the question is, when one is submitted, who reviews it?
I had the board professionals in there, I didn't know if maybe the board wanted, I mean, I.
Right, I was gonna ask that the board professionals, unless they have an issue that we can't agree upon.
Which I don't expect, I, I did not anticipate, I'm sorry, I'm just hoping we, for that to be returned to the board.
All right, that was my concern, that if it's agreeable to both sides, we don't have to come back if there's a dispute.
I would just throw in there that the borough's emergency management coordinator should also be a part of that, please.
Yeah, and there was.
Oh, O E M, all right.
O E M.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I, I know we have a motion on the table, I don't think it's been seconded.
Nope.
Oh, there was no second.
I, I will do that in a second, just a, a point of clarification, they, we are voting on preliminary and final site plan because this is an amendment to an existing final site plan, and it's not a new.
Correct.
Okay.
That's our request.
I just wanted to, to make sure of that, so I will second the motion that Mr. Kraska made with all of the comments that have been stated previously.
With your list.
And I just wanna add, since we brought up the condensers and there was testimony, they will be added as necessary in light of this change, and they'll be screened as required by the redevelopment plan and the organs, whatever it is that's working.
Perfect.
Just a couple of quick comments on this, one, you know, the idea that we're, that you're changing uses, I think that's smart, it's good business. You're adapting to what the market is demanding right now, and that's one of the challenges that I think downtowns have in their zoning regulations, that they can't adapt quick enough, and it becomes a burden. So I think you coming in and understanding where the market is driving creates a, a good opportunity for you to capitalize on what the market is demanding right now. Second, I think the hotel is a great use, you see hotels popping up in and around Somerset County, and the interesting thing is, they all come to downtown Somerville to eat or to shop. So, so now you're actually bringing those folks from outside Somerville, you're bringing them in as, as visitors, as guests, that have a very low impact on the borough, but have a very, I should, a low impact on infrastructure, but a high impact on, on revenue for, for our store owners and our stores downtown. So I think that's a great use. That's it. That's all I got.
Anybody else before we vote? Okay.
Andrea Dyer? Chris Addicks?
Yes, couldn't find the button.
Larry Cleveland?
Yes.
Jason Kraska?
Yes.
John Manilio?
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilperson Vroom?
Yes.
Acting chairperson Warner?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, in lieu of time, I think we are going to hold pending business for the next meeting, okay? So that's gonna be the fencing ordinance and the A R B procedures. I have no other, oh, I should, yeah, I have no other comments for myself as the chairperson, I'm gonna open up the meeting to the public for comments. Hearing none, we will close the public session, so we are going to be moving into executive session, thank you. While we are in executive, we will be taking no action, do we need to come back to close out, or can we close out now?
We can close out right now.
Okay.
We just need to indicate.
Uh, real quick?
I, I would, two things, one, I would be much more comfortable if we actually came back.
Okay.
That's, that's a standard practice that we use at council, and it is a standard practice that we've had, or at least I've, my experience with the planning board, is that we come back because it allows a clo, a.
Closure.
Closure of a, of a session.
Yep.
Public closure of a session.
Yeah, so we will be coming, returning from executive session to open and to be closed the public session, and discussion during executive.
Is to just discuss the presentations that we saw.
With no, no action.
No action, just discussion.
No action, and it will be under the personnel discussion and professional association.
And then council president Vroom had brought up a subject to me, which I agreed with wholeheartedly, and he just wants to talk a little bit about that.
With, with what we've been doing with our approvals of some of the new properties in, in the redevelopment zone, we have been challenged with how to handle E Vs and where they can charge, and, and thinking about not wanting them inside decks, not wanting. not wanting them close to, you know, those residences. So I was wondering if the board would like to take up the concept of creating an ordinance for the borough, and how we handle that going forward, so it's not a plan by plan basis. It's something along the lines of to memorialize what we've already been doing, which is, we don't want them in, we don't want charging stations in the decks, and we don't, certainly don't want them underground in the decks, and that we want them set back from, you know, from these multifamily residences.
I think it's a great idea, definitely, you know, so we can get that on.
Now, flooding issues is also an issue, I didn't realize that they're too submerged in water, that there's a problem.
Yes.
I think the more we can rely on and point to, the better.
So, so maybe we put that on the agenda for a discussion point at, at the next meeting or the meeting after.
And we'll look, we'll just make sure on what's on for the next agenda. So we'll look at it, it may be the next one or the one after, because I do wanna be able to have good discussion on it and not be rushed on that, too.
Uh, I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Second. Andrea Dyer.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilperson Vroom.
Yes.
Acting chairperson Warner.
Yes.
I'll be cutting off the stream now, because there'll be no further action.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.